Would you please stand? Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Has the notice for this meeting been posted?
I certify that it has been posted in accordance with the law.
Right, sir. Any public comment? All right.
Yes, sir. We have one individual who signed up for public comments. They are Dr. Ashili.
Chairman Storma, Chancellor Costello, and the trustees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and to address this. My name is Dr. Shashanka Ashili. I'm a resident, a scientist by profession, and I'm a graduate of a teaching college. So similar to LSE, I would like to share my story today with the profound appreciation and importance of teaching colleges in our educational system. I was born in a village in South India. At the age of 15, I moved away from my childhood place to pursue diploma in electronics engineering. I remember the days of thyristers and diodes, which were still tubes, not at the silicon level as today. You know, I went on to one of the top colleges in India to pursue my bachelor's degree. Twenty-four years ago, in 2000, I came to the United States. As many of you might remember, it was Y2K fever at that time. Everyone was worried about Y2K. And I'm sure some of you, you know, also know about the F1 visa, and I was on the student visa. I was more worried about the campus job, how to pay my bills. Those were, you know, similar to other immigrants who were on the visa. Never knew what an American dream was. All I knew was there were opportunities in America. After completing my master's in electrical engineering, I went on to pursue PhD in optical science. From one of the university, PhD in optics is offered like less than 20 in this country. I'd like to remind everyone such a transition from engineering to physical sciences only happens in America. Being from India, I never knew, you know, we never had that opportunity, you know, and I successfully completed my PhD with publications. Joined as an innovation fellow under Sejas ex-president, Society of Gastrointestinal and Endoscopic Surgeons, and chairman of surgery at Mizzou at the time. That gave me a good opportunity to understand the academic world as an employee. You know, till then, I was a student on F1 visa, struggling all those, but that gave me an opportunity to learn, you know, and being a level-one trauma center, Department of Surgery, was a big one in Missouri. So it was, it was a good learning experience, and I became a truly interdisciplinary scientist. Interdisciplinary scientist, I started as a small college and went on to pursue and become an interdisciplinary scientist after staying for seven years on student visa. A success that only happens in America, if I might say. I further pursued my research at ISU, Arizona State, under a $36 million, 10-year grant. My boss, the grantee, was dean of engineering, where I interfaced with scientists from all walks of life, mechanical, electronics, optics, physics, you name it. I was at the center of building complex devices to understand cellular heterogeneity. Mentored many students there, and we were one of the first group to publish single-cell analysis, which is a complex phenomenon in the cancer research. I spent significant time in the startup world where I patented, launched, and built teams. And I had the opportunity to work in different cities and different countries. During this period, I spent in Erie, Pennsylvania, one of the poorest zip codes in America, and Chester, Pennsylvania, which is the most violent neighborhood. I had the opportunity to understand the economic inequalities and built relationships, lifelong relationships, with the community elders as well as the religious leaders. Right before COVID, I came back to sciences as the founding CEO of a research organization, Cure Science. I still work there as a scientist with a specific focus on digital medicine and personalized medicine. As my story reflects, I'm proud to say I'm a graduate of a small college. I navigated the legal immigration system. Yes, it has its challenges, but I navigated, and I'm living an American dream. To the students of this community as well as at large, it's okay that you are going through challenges, whether it is visa or career opportunities. It's okay that you came from different backgrounds and different socioeconomic conditions. Growing up, I worked on a farm and encountered hunger, though limited, encountered hopelessness when I was on student visa as well. But none of those will define where you'll go, and that is called American dream, only possible in America. I teach my kids, anything and everything is possible in America. Again, thank you for giving me a chance to address this meeting. Whether I win this trustee position or not, I will always be accessible to students. Please feel free to Google my name. Being a scientist, you lose privacy. You don't have a right to privacy. In the end, I couldn't be here without the support of my wife, who shared my struggles and rock of my life. We both had been on student visa for almost 10 years. My daughter calls me an old man. She's 11 years old and chatty. My sons call me, calls me a pragmatic person, which is more or less, I agree. Both of them go to CFS SD schools, and my wife calls me progressive human being, never dared to ask why. And in the end, I'm a simple guy, a brown guy with thick accent. Still, it's a joke. You can laugh. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Introductions, special guests, recognitions.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a few. Let's start with some introductions. So we have, I believe, I was taking attendance earlier. I think we have all of the faculty senate presidents here, so I wanted the board and everyone to recognize who they are. So we have Mr. Clay White, who's the faculty senate president from LSE Cyfair. Yes, if you could please stand in it. Ms. Patrice Craft, who's the faculty senate president from Houston North. Dr. Dalvi, who is the faculty senate president from Kingwood. Mr. Waits, who is the LSE Montgomery faculty senate president. Dr. Welsh, who is the Lone Star College North Harris faculty senate president. Dr. Davis, who is the LSE Online faculty senate president. Mr. Corey Colby, who is the LSE Tomball. Oh, I missed him, and now I've done exactly what I was not wanting to do. And Professor Miss Donnelly, who is the University Park faculty senate president. And so the faculty senate presidents and I continue the tradition that Dr. had had, and we meet once a month. It's a very lively discussion most of the time. So lively, in fact, that we have two outgoing faculty senate presidents that we wanted to recognize tonight. I should have recognized them at the end of the spring semester, but I neglected to do that, and the error is solely mine, so I've tried to rectify my mistake tonight. So we want to recognize Professor Ginger Frey, who is a professor of English, and she's the outgoing faculty senate president from Tomball. And Professor Jennifer Coyote, who's a professor of criminal justice, and she's the outgoing faculty senate president for LSE Kingwood. And if you guys will come up, we'd like to take a picture just real quick. Chair. All right, and then I have, I think, introductions, special guests. Yes, I am done for now. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, Chancellor, is that?
Yes, sir. I'm done for now. Thank you.
Let me just say, Chancellor, that, you know, one time, there was a place on the board's agenda where the faculty senate was able to speak. I invite you to get back on the agenda. It's up to you and the chancellor's team. But we would certainly love to hear from you, a different perspective, because you do have a different perspective on things. We'd like to hear it. So you can discuss that amongst yourselves, and if it happens, then I hope maybe in October, we'll see you on the agenda, maybe, huh? Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion for approval of the minutes of the August 1st, 2024 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to approve? Can I second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? The item passes. Special reports and announcements, Chancellor. Do you have anything?
I do. I do, actually. Thank you. So I want to start with the events. So we had a fall 2024 convocation on August 22nd, which was two weeks ago today. Yes. I want to try, I want to thank trustee Kane and trustee Pierce were there. Quickly making sure I didn't forget anyone. Yes, no. I want to thank them for being there. We had a great convocation. It was in the afternoon. And, you know, we tried it in the afternoon board, but I think that next year, we're going to go back to the morning. And I'll just leave it at that. We'll just go back. We're going to go back to the morning. As everyone knows, the reason it was in the afternoon this year was because originally we were going to have the investiture in the morning, but I wanted, because we're trying to save money by not renting the space twice, by the way. If you're wondering why we're trying to have the event, we're trying to save money. And since we're already paying for the whole day, we can have two events for the price of one. BOGO. So we had Watts here actually on Friday on August 30th, so that was a week ago. No, a week, six days ago. We had a really sort of good turnout as well, and it was the first sort of, by the way, for those of you who don't know, Watts stands for What's the Word on the Street? And it is the Chancellor's Forum, and so we stream it across the entire system, and it travels from college to college. So this last Friday was here in two weeks. Because of schedules, I'm going to be at Houston North. And so then, then after that, we're going to be on LSE Online, and if you're wondering where LSE Online is, it's going to be online only. So so that's that. We also are going to have the tax rate public hearing on September 18th. We're going to circulate something to the board, but we're planning for a 5:00 PM time, again, September 18th, 2024. It's a Wednesday at 5:00 PM, tentatively scheduled based on the quorum that we can achieve. I also, because some of you have sort of asked, asked questions about where our enrollments are, so I actually printed a report this morning. Students, as of this morning, we're up 3.4% in headcount, and we are up 2.9% in credit hours. And so I think according to Dr. Nepolis, and if I'm misquoting, Dr. Nepolis, please correct me. I believe if, if the headcount holds, it will be the highest enrollment in the history of Lone Star. Is that accurate? Okay. And number two is that I think if the credit hours hold, it will be the second highest credit hours in the history of Lone Star, right? We're about 3,000 credit hours away from the number one spot, and we've got a weekend to go. So again, to the board, again, thank you for your support for closing during Hurricane Barrel. You can see that just our students and our employees really appreciated it because we've had sort of, if you think about where we started at negative 7%, 8%, and today we're at plus 3%, that's an 11-point difference in essentially a month. And so a lot of people have worked really hard across the system. And before I forget, I also want to thank everyone and recognize the individuals who staged this room, right? There's a lot of sort of work that goes into a board meeting, and I think a lot of us that kind of just get to show up sometimes can take it for granted. But I can tell you, I saw people like steaming these mantles over the tables and making sure that we don't have trip hazards and checking the audio. And so to our IT folks in the back and facilities and everybody else who's in charge of this, thank you so much, because without you, we literally cannot have the meeting. So I wanted to recognize that. And so lastly, last, last month, trustee Sullivan, you asked for us to sort of meet internally and talk about the budget, the, the, the budget calendar, if you will. So I'm prepared, I think. Let's see if this works. I think it changed. There we go. So I do have a small presentation I promised last month. So the budget timeline that we have, that we've inherited is, first of all, we have to legally approve the operating budget by September 1st. And so that's really sort of the drop dead date. That's as far out as we could go in sort of scheduling the approval. And on the other end, this is the current budget timeline. So in February, as you guys are well aware on the board, we meet and we have the retreat, and that's really sort of where we get the high-level financial direction from myself and the CFO. And the, and the truth of the matter is to all trustees that about, depending on which business unit you're talking about, we have about 14 to 15. Most of our budget about between, again, depending on which budget you're looking at, 85, 89% labor and employment costs, right? So really sort of the variance that we can really sort of plan for the most part is that other remaining 11% of that. And so what's traditionally happened between, and it really sort of starts the very next day, right? Like, I can tell you, I just received the draft of the October agendas from the legal department an hour before this meeting started, and my first thought is, can I please just survive the September board meeting before you start asking you about the October board agenda items? But that gives you how quickly the turnaround has to be just for a regular board meeting. So between September, between, between the board approving the budget in August, and September 1st, there's this army of employees, of staff that basically come together and they input all of that budget into essentially the system. Hyperion, I believe, is what it's called. And so if you move a board meeting further along than where it is in August, and you compress the time of the employees that have to basically say, okay, we weren't going to do anything until the board approved the budget. So the con is that you shrink that window. And so really, from about August until February, people are essentially at the vice chancellor level and below sort of prioritizing, prioritizing what their requests are going to be. By around February or March is when the chancellor's office gets them traditionally, and that's when the chancellor traditionally sits down and says, okay, based on the strategic priorities, what are we going to fund amongst all these requests? And I don't have to tell you that there are always much, much more requests than there is money, right? And so that's really sort of the big chunk that we talk about in February is really to get a strategic direction from the board, like we did this last February about, here's where the administration is thinking about going. And HB8 has also changed this. As Dr. Vian has talked about from state funding, which is where we get about 20 to 21% of our budget, instead of, we now have a three-pay system, and so we get the first check essentially in October. So what that means is that, consistent with sort of what I've told the board multiple times, is it's my fiscal philosophy that we should not spend money we don't have. Even if it's promised, even if we have almost shared guarantees that it's going to come, I don't think it sets up the institution for long-term financial success to bank on money that we don't have. And so really, this year, my second year as chancellor, and my first year sort of building a budget almost from scratch the entire 12 months, we haven't really spent or even allocated the HB8 money. And so what that means is that moving forward, the budget model that we do internally is going to have to change because we're going to essentially have to start planning how we're going to spend the money after we get it. Whereas traditionally, it's been spent and allocated before we got it. So in the spring, you would essentially have the chancellor say, I'm going to fund this, I'm going to fund that. The money hits the bank, it's already been spent, and then it's just a matter of distributing it. Now, from my vision is that we start particularly with the HB8 money until we get it is when we start trying to decide how we spend it. And so the reason I'm giving you all that background is this is how it's traditionally worked, but it is my recommendation to the board that at least, maybe not this year, but next year, we really take a look at completely sort of redoing the timeline of how we essentially allocate the new money. So in June then is the budget workshop. Now, I can tell you, because I wasn't always the chancellor here. There was a point where I was the vice chancellor, and so I can tell you that from about September until June-ish, as a vice chancellor, you would submit your request, and you were kind of on the edge trying to figure out if you were going to get funded or not. And June was really the first time where as an operational officer, you heard, hey, I'm going to be able to get that money, right? And I would tell my staff when I was a vice chancellor, until it's on that June workshop, it's a dream. And really, it's a pipe dream until it makes it on the June workshop. And so in June, we have that. And so then, again, the other thing that I want to add is we have between June, we don't get, we are subject to two externalities that we really don't control. The tax rules, when we get those on the other end in August, and the state allocations, right? Which as Dr. Vian talks about every time that she comes up here, she always issues a disclaimer worthy of being a lawyer about how HB8 isn't sort of solidified. So we have June, July, and August. And so when we bounce around ideas about where to add the meeting, where we arrived, actually, let me take a step back, in July. So in July, traditionally, what we tried to do is we tried to get the board book, I'm sorry, the proposed budget report to the board of trustees at least a week before the board meeting adopting the budget. We failed to do that this year in full transparency, and I want to be really transparent about whose responsibility it was. It was the responsibility of my office, the office of the chancellor, not the office of the CFO. The CFO dutifully delivered it on time, I think either Wednesday, before definitely the Thursday. It was my office that held on to it for one reason or another from Thursday until Monday. So then on Monday, we delivered them, and I agree completely that waiting until Monday to give you a proposed budget report of a $513 million budget is unacceptable. And so next year, you will most definitely get it well ahead of that Monday, but I wanted to make sure that the board understood, particularly trustees, that the responsibility is mine as the chancellor, because it was in the office of the chancellor the week before. And so we also had Hurricane Barrel, right, which kind of delayed not only the office of the chancellor, but the office of the CFO and et cetera. So we also had, you know, what Nicholas Taylor calls a black swan event, right? We had a black swan event, and I've worked here for 10 years now. This is my 10th year. We've never had a hurricane in July. And so we've never had to have sort of this July board book, a budget book interrupted that way. But even still, we should have still gotten out that budget report a week early. So what we propose is that in August, that in August, that we add a budget workshop the day of the August regular board meeting. Trustee Sullivan, that essentially, instead of just coming in, in that August board meeting and saying, here's the budget, that we actually have a workshop before that August regular meeting. Now, one of the discussions that I've had with the staff is, it's a real board meeting, guys. So you understand that if we come in, we present in that workshop, and the trustees have questions that delay the budget, we fully have to be prepared to schedule a special meeting between whatever date that is and September 1st. And we all agree that that is what we would do in that situation. I also want to highlight that because of the way the board meetings are scheduled right now, the first Thursday of the month shifts. So this year, it was August 1st, right? And subsequent years, it hasn't always been August 1st. Like, I remember very vividly, my first board meeting in August of 2025 was, I started on the 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, which is the 6th of August, right? And it doesn't seem like five days is a big deal, but it really is when you have a four-week compressed timeframe. And so our recommendation, after weighing all the pros and cons, trustee Sullivan and the rest of the board, is to add a special budget workshop the day of the August regular board meeting, so that we give both the people who have to load the budget for your consideration as much time to get that done on the front end, and the people who have to input the budget and operationalize your decisions on the backend as much time as possible. And so I welcome any questions, but that's the essential nature of my presentation today.
So when you say this year or next year, are you talking 2025 or 2026?
We're talking 20, building the 26 budget.
Chair, are you going to ask if we have questions or?
Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. Good presentation, good information. I think what would be helpful for me, and you may have this built into that timeline, would be roughly 10 to 14 days to, for me to review a budget, pour a vote on it. So having an August budget workshop, whatever day that is, how many days until we would take a vote after that?
So you would have to approve the budget by September 1st, sir?
Okay. All right. For me, I'm just going to say, because there's too many variables, and you're in control of most of those variables. I'll just say, if I have 10 to 14 days to review a budget, to ask questions, I feel like I'd be able to make an informed vote.
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm asking for.
We will. So just to be clear, you're asking for 10 to 14 days for the budget, budget report to be delivered to you, this report?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm. Yes, sir, we could do that.
And what I do, Chancellor, I mean, when I get that, I just start going through it. It's kind of a slow, methodical process. We ought to fit it in with work and personal life and things that come up, and then develop my questions to send to you, and then for you to distribute, so that we can get answers back, and then I can take a look at it. None of it is second guessing. For me, it's just being as informed as I possibly can be on a $500 million budget.
Yes, sir. I understand the expectation.
Thank you, Chair.
That's all I have, Chair.
That all? All right. Thank you, Chancellor. Chancellor's cabinet, who's up? No one? Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you, Chair, Chancellor, trustees. I appreciate the time today. I'll be relatively brief, but I did want to dive into exactly what our division is. So my name is Ben Melson. I'm vice chancellor of Strategic, the Strategic Engagement and Communications Division at Lone Star College. And one of the first questions I get introducing myself, well, one is the comment on how long my title is and how ridiculous that is. But two, what in the heck do we actually do as a division? And so I thought I would dig into really kind of who we are and what our focus is. And as I've reflected on what to present here today over the last couple of weeks, you know, I took time to think back on the last seven, eight months that we took to actually bring six different departments together to create this division. And I can say, it certainly wasn't seamless, but I am proud to say that we're, we're rowing in the same direction now, and we've got a very clear vision and goals for our work and the work that we do. And what it really all comes down to are people for us. And fortunately for me, we've got some tremendous people on all of our teams and each of our departments who make up our division. And I want to explain a little bit more about the work that we do and the impact that we have. So our focus is purely people internally and externally. So we're talking about students, number one, of course, but supporting our faculty and our staff. And then externally, looking at our community leaders, our business partners, our elected officials, and really just the community at large as taxpayers and how we work with them. So I'd love to dive in really quickly to each of our departments and a little bit of the work that they do and recognize them for the work that they do. So the foundation, everyone here has heard plenty about what the foundation has done, unfortunately because of disasters, but also tremendous work. Nicole, AKA Big Money. She and her team has stood up a disaster relief program in a matter of days, along with a lot of great folks internally, and raised north of $2 million and fully distributed those funds to over 500 students and about 200 faculty and staff in response to Hurricane Barrel. That's not the only, that was all while they were still working to raise funds for scholarships and over several millions of dollars worth of scholarships every year that flow out of, out of their division. So a huge impact for our students and the community at large. Next, on marketing and communications, so they really truly are the voice of Lone Star. You all saw their commercials. We were fortunate to have a lot of the team up here last time. Huge, huge leadership there with Amy. Huge, huge leadership there with Amy Cooper, John Keating, Lindsay, and several others who do fantastic work in, in accomplishing all of that. And the, the funny thing about them, they, they are very creative, right? And we finally freed them up to kind of think new and innovative in how they're approaching their work. And it's been really fun to see that start to take life. And I think you saw the beginnings of that in the commercials that we saw not long ago. Organizational development, a lot of folks kind of question where this one came from, right? The, the wonderful fit here is that they're the bridge and the connector across our internal partners, our campuses, our faculty members and all of our staff members that participate in their PD programming, their leadership programming. It's all year round. And that team now too, is taking a little bit of a new look at what we're doing with our division performance reviews, how we make those more actionable, how we tie in professional development to that programming. They've built out an I want to be a pathway for current faculty and staff who are interested in potentially becoming a dean or an advisor. It's a nine month course where we train them on the, the skills and the high quality traits that it takes to become that. So a lot of really innovative work there that I think will benefit the system long-term and support all of our internal partners. The next conference centers, so John Golden, who's here today and Gabrielle came from their normal location at the Woodlands. They are fantastic, the whole team there is, but the conference center is a really great opportunity for us to bring the larger community and those outside organizations and who we're looking to partner with and business entities and so on. And the work that they do is truly invaluable. And in fact, I, I think we can do even better on maximizing that space. And I'm glad to say that we were able to fit into our budget new tables for that the very first time since the that building was built. They were 100 pound tables. So the team deserved that very much. Onto a, a new office that we created. So the Office of Internal and Community Relations. So this team is really unique in the fact that they're looking at what research they can create and design as far as white papers and so on in-house to support some of the programs and direct some of the resources that we have as a division. They've also got an events team now who's supporting events across our division, such as Heritage Months across the system. And they're also a huge bridge into our campuses. We've got folks actually on campus supporting student organizations, supporting student leadership programming. Even one of our folks is an advisor, a voluntary advisor for one of the student organizations there, but they're really the connection for us from the system office side down to the campus side and what's going on there in the community, who we need to engage more in the community and so on. Then we've got the Leadership and Economic Development Crew, and this is led by Kay and her team. And they, they run the Leadership North Houston Program. They run the High School Leadership Program as well. A lot of tremendous work going on there in the northern part of our region. And, and we're looking to expand the impact we have there specifically on the economic development side. We've got, we're members of several chambers. This group is at every event you can imagine, just about talking about workforce issues, talking about our priorities related to that and our programming related to that. And finally, we've got the, well, not finally, next to last, Strategic Partnerships. So Linda Head has been instrumental in keeping a lot of the work going as far as the workforce-related initiatives, some of our business partners we brought to the table. So she's continued to engage those folks with her team. Latonya over there has been at just about every event. You've probably seen her at a booth or a table somewhere as well. Really great work that we're going to continue and add on to, I think, what Katie and her team are doing. And our business folks, the, she is our conduit into there and we are going to continue to leverage that. And finally, our External Relations Team. So we officially have three team members on our External Relations Team. We've got, I've got two pathways, one looking at sort of the very local community relations piece, working with nonprofit organizations, other community leaders. Really to focus on providing support services to our students even beyond food access and things like that. And the other track, looking at our external relations, so local, state and federal government. We've got two folks who moved over there, Brandon and Ashley, who are already off, hit the ground running. Brandon was already kind of in these circles going. And so it's been a joy to watch them just take off and run with it. And, you know, to wrap things up, I really wanted to focus on my, my folks, but I wanted to give you a brief idea of what sort of lens we view our work through, how we make decisions as a division and, and all the way down into our teams within our departments. And here we came up with, as a team and my leadership team and everybody involved, or everybody who was a part of the division came up with our guiding principles, our vision and our why. As you can see, everything in here is about people and it's about being the bridge and the connector between our campuses, our business organizations and our external partners. And so this is the lens we look at everything through, starting with our students, the people involved, chancellor's goals, and then our division guiding principles and goals. And I want to, I wanted to include these because they're really, these next few slides are really vital in painting a picture of how we operate in the lens we operate through. So first, of course, from the external partners perspective is the state funding changes, the formula funding, we're going to be very active up there. Our goal is to be a, one of the educational voices on higher ed related issues at the state level and be very, become very trusted in that space. The next is looking at the economics. We're going to make this much, a much bigger part of what we do, how we approach our work and how we approach partnerships with our business, our friends in the business world. And ultimately, how we get our students into the workforce and actually placed into jobs in the workforce that are high demand and well-paying. So we're constantly paying attention to the regional economic outlook. We're looking at forecasts as well on workforce related and industry related data. And then we're looking at the state's view and other organizations' view of credentials and value. And then actually, we've, thank you to the chancellor, we've got our internal credentials of value grading systems as well that we're paying attention to. So I wanted you to get a sense here of all the different aspects that we cover, all the different items that we focus in on where we're approaching any problem and the work that we do. And I will end there and pause for any questions.
Questions? Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. Chancellor, with respect to the credentials of values, the chart that was up, will that, is that the same information right there? Is that what you presented to us at the board retreat when you were laying up here? Okay, so will this keep you online to meeting those?
I'm sorry?
Will, will this keep you online in meeting those objectives?
I can't, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Will this keep you on the path to meeting those objectives?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir. So the way that we use this, for example, is I, I had a conversation with the college president a few months ago and they said, like, when you look on the agenda and we're closing down programs or deactivating programs, right? The number one question that I ask cabinet members when they're deactivating a program is why are you deactivating it? And what are you replacing it with? And if the answer is usually something that's lower ranking on that list, unless they have a very compelling argument, I say try again. So for example, I'm going to deactivate number 87, just to pick one. What are you replacing it? 110, try again. Right? We need to be replacing, because the way these are ranked is essentially the, the, the demand on these job categories based on job postings as well as the salary that these jobs pay. And so we want to make sure that the ultimate value proposition of education at Lone Star College is employment. And so if you come here and you get a degree and you don't have a job, I think we failed you. And so that's part of the idea behind G5 here, which is what this table is, sir.
Good, good. Thank you.
How you doing, Chair?
Trustee Willis?
Can we get a copy of this? I would like to review this.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We can send it out.
A good presentation.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you. Please note that trustee vote has entered the meeting. Next, other employee groups, American Federation of Teachers. Dr. Bergdoff?
Good evening. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. And I want to thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm going to start tonight by telling you a story about my kitchen. So my house was built in 1955. It's a classic example of mid-century, mid-century home architecture. And for the most part, it has been maintained consistently with that style. The exception is the kitchen. Sometime around the 1980s, a previous owner made some renovations to the kitchen that don't fit the house at all. For example, they put up some plaid beige and blue wallpaper, which apparently was considered pretty at that time. In addition to the plaid, there is a parade of white geese forming a border up at the ceiling level and a second parade right at the counter level. Geese apparently were very big in the 1980s. I have nothing against geese, but there is a problem. Right at the sink, the space between the counter and the bottom of the kitchen window is too narrow for the geese. So whoever hung the wallpaper just chopped off all of their heads. It is a bit disturbing to look at decapitated geese when you're washing dishes. Over the years, I've always intended to redo the kitchen and to get rid of the geese. But other more pressing projects kept getting in the way. Replacing the roof, changing out the HVAC system, bringing the wiring up to code, replacing all the plumbing, leveling the foundation, all the issues that go with the 70-year-old house. Although de-geacing the kitchen would be less expensive than some of these bigger projects, at some point, it becomes hard to justify spending more money. The decapitated geese don't pose an essential structural problem, so for now, they are still there. So why am I talking to you about my kitchen? On your agenda tonight are four action items related to building a second boardroom for Lone Star Trustees. And I believe I can draw a parallel. Action items 11, 12, and 13 would set aside money to build a new boardroom where we are right now. And action item 16 would officially move your monthly meetings from the Woodlands to here. Action items 11, 12, and 13 are nearly identical, but all project different costs ranging as high as $1.6 million. Although Lone Star has made, has built many capital projects that cost a lot more, this is still a lot of money. And I contend that the board has an obligation to justify to the taxpayers and students who will ultimately pay the bill, why this is an essential project. The current boardroom in the Woodlands has just been completely refurbished in the last couple of years at considerable expense and has technical and security features that would keep it a viable working space for years to come. So how do we justify doing all of that again here? At last month's board meeting, a few arguments were made in favor of this construction. It was stated that this location would be more centrally located than the Woodlands. Since I come from Cyfair, I'll admit that it would be kind of nice for me if we met here. It wouldn't be so nice coming from Kingwood where I used to teach. Did you know that the geographic area covered by the taxing district for Lone Star College is larger than the entire state of Delaware? In fact, considerably larger. What that means is that anywhere the board chooses to meet is going to be a long drive for someone. Can we argue that the net decrease in miles driven by all the people who attended these meetings would justify $1.6 million in expense? Hurricane Barrel accentuated what all of us already knew. Lone Star College owns a lot of property that is in need of serious, extensive and expensive renovation. All the things that I needed to do for my 70-year-old house, but on a much, much grander scale. I firmly believe that the students and taxpayers who pay our bills understand why these projects need to be done and will support that work. Can we make the argument that $1.6 million for a second boardroom falls in the same category? I'm sure whatever remodeling would be done to the space we are now in would be very nice. And hopefully it would be something that the students here at UP could use and enjoy while the board is not here. But $1.6 million could also pay the salaries of more or less 30 full-time academic or financial, financial aid advisors for a year. Which expenditure benefits students more? Unless a solid case can be made that a new boardroom is urgent and essential and not at the same level of importance as getting rid of the decapitated geese in my kitchen, I respectfully encourage the members of this board to vote no on these action items. In addition to action items 11, 12, 13, and 16, there's another action item on the agenda that relates to the board. Action item 17 would move your monthly meetings from 5:00 in the afternoon to 10:30 in the morning. I'm sorry, I don't have a cute illustration to go with this one. But in my view, this proposal raises even greater concerns. At the last board meeting, the statement was made that there are many organizations that hold their board meetings in the mornings. I am absolutely sure that there are examples. But are there examples at institutions with the same mission as ours? I decided to check this out. I visited the websites of eight of the other large multi-campus community college systems in Texas to see when their boards of trustees meet. Specifically, I checked out Houston Community College and San Jacinto College here in our neighborhood, as well as Dallas, Collin, and Tarrant County Colleges up in the metroplex, Austin Community College, Alamo College in San Antonio, and El Paso Community College. None of those boards meet in the mornings. All of them meet in the late afternoons or evenings. The earliest start time among this group is 4:00 PM. The latest is 7:00 PM. Four of these boards start earlier than Lone Star currently does, and four of them start later, putting us squarely in the middle. Again, none of them meet in the morning. To my mind, the reasons are clear. Community colleges are the people's colleges. Now, millionaires are welcome to come. And hopefully they will leave some money for our foundation while they're here. But we are primarily in existence to serve and uplift working people and their families. Community college boards should meet when working people can come if they feel they need to. Working people cannot come to a meeting at 10:30 in the morning. With some exceptions, people who for whatever reason do not work can come at either 10:30 or 5:00. As was pointed out at the last meeting, there are not a lot of community people who come to these meetings. I'll always be here. Someone needs to expound on the beauties of the Davis Bacon Act, and that's my job. There are a couple of reasons why more people don't come. First, 5:00 in the afternoon is actually early. It's a problem for someone working a standard workday to get here by then. Second, people not coming, especially not coming to speak, probably means they are happy overall with what the board is doing. People show up when they have something they are concerned about. We have had standing room only with students holding protest signs in the past. That was a long time ago, but some of you may remember. Ironically, it's a testimony to the quality of the decisions made by the current administration and the board that people are not coming to these meetings in large numbers. If that ever changes, and I don't want it to, scheduling a meeting when it is impossible to attend tells people that their input is not important. We also need to remember that community members are not the only people who visit these meetings. Lone Star uses these meetings to recognize students for special accomplishments, to highlight the achievement of staff, and to recognize initiatives of faculty. 10:30 is peak class time for faculty and students. Most of them will find it impossible to be here at that time. Staff who currently have to leave their work sites early to get here by 5:00 would have to give up an entire morning to be here at 10:30. Moving the board meetings would mean giving up on these opportunities for the board to interact with the people of Lone Star. And I feel like that would be a shame. There's one last constituency who we may not be thinking about that would also be impacted by a time change. Because of the realities of modern life, Board of Trustees' meetings cannot take place without, without a substantial presence Because of the realities of modern life, Board of Trustees' meetings cannot take place without, without a substantial presence from our police department. No one location can supply the police presence that is needed. We draw in police from all across the system. We ask a lot of them to gather for a meeting at five, but at ten thirty, we are pulling them away from campuses at the times when those campuses are most heavily occupied, and that strains their ability to keep our students and employees safe. Moving Board of Trustees' meetings to ten thirty would be, in my view, a disservice to our communities, our employees, and our students. If anything, it would be analogous to taking a perfectly fine kitchen and putting decapitated geese in. Please don't do that. I respectfully encourage you to vote no on action item seventeen. Thank you so much for your time and your kind consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bergdahl. Board members, do you have any reports, comments you'd like to make? Trusty Kane?
Thank you. Um, and I'm having trouble hearing across, across the table. Can you all hear me? Okay?
I can hear you well. I think it's, you know, yeah, you gotta move close to the, close to the mic.
Okay. Is this good?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to mention, um, uh, opportunity I had to attend the Law Enforcement Academy graduation in the evening of August twenty first at Kingwood College. That was a great event, absolutely a great event. That evening, twenty-three cadets graduated, and many already, uh, secured jobs with various law enforcement agencies. Uh, in fact, it was great to see them as they, as they walked off the stage, many of them. Uh, they were greeted by someone from the law enforcement agency that had just given them a job, and they pinned their badges right on them as they left the stage. So it was, it was great to, to see, to see that event, and I want to thank Dr. Kashvala and Dr. Gonzalez, who administer the program, for their remarks that evening, and Mr. Glenn Riddle, the director of the academy, as well as Mr. George Gaetan, the lead instructor. Just, just a outstanding event that evening.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have comments? Trusty Salom.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, two comments. One, I had asked Nicole to help me with something, and she did, so I just want to acknowledge you for stepping up and, and jumping in to help. Thank you. Second, I want to thank Dr. Benny Lambert, who agreed to meet me at his campus to get a tour of the Auto Tech program. Uh, I was particularly interested in it for the company that I work for. Uh, we need to recruit trained, qualified employees, uh, who are first students for the most part. So I was able to spend about an hour on campus to meet some of the personnel and to see the equipment and facilities, and just want to thank you for your time publicly. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments? All right, board committees, any, uh, board chair, committee chairs who'd like to, like to comment or report? Trusty Salom.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you, and sorry to dominate the conversation tonight. The Audit and Finance Committee met on August thirtieth. I'd like to thank Maricela for taking notes for me so that I could concentrate on the substance of the meeting at the time. The notes are quite long. Frankly, I'm going to ask her to email them out to all the trustees. But to give you an idea quickly, we update, had an update on corporate contact, contracts, and potential litigation, review of the investment policy items scheduled for September board meeting tonight. Update on external auditor findings and remaining scope of work, status of current external auditor, and timeline for potential replacement, and discuss and review internal audit plans for Lone Star College system and peer institutions. So had a lot of work. That committee is Dr. Kane, Chair Stoman, and myself, and we'll continue the work and report back to our colleagues.
I want to say to that committee, I think you've set a record. I mean, in the six years I've been here, I don't know that any other PRC has accomplished what you've accomplished. You moved a lot of policies through. You've done it very expeditiously, which has helped the administration execute on their job. So I just want to commend you. Thank you. Thank you for your dedication and your work. Any other, uh, committee chairs like to comment, report? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have nineteen items. It's already requested that items seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen be pulled for discussion. There any others that need to be pulled for discussion? All righty. So we're gonna, we're gonna vote on these others. Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen? Do I have a second? Second to approve? You second? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then the item is passed. Thank you. I've had several requests from trustees that a discussion be, be held before voting on items eleven, twelve, thirteen. And what that means is, we open the floor up for discussion. We discuss these items, and then we take a motion and vote on these items. In order to take that approach, I need, uh, your consent. I need a unanimous consent for this. Did you want to say?
Sure. And so procedurally, the chair can ask if there's any objection to combining those three agenda items so that you can, under Robert's rules, you've opened all three items for discussion when you make a motion, and you can discuss all three at the same time as opposed to discussing each of them um, in sequential order. So it, Mr. Chair, if you want to ask if there are any objections, if there are no objections, then you can ask for a motion on those three items.
All right. So there, are there any objections to doing it this way?
May I have your notice? Yes, sir. Thank you. I don't necessarily want to portray this as an objection to that motion. I just prefer that any item be discussed individually that's on the agenda, because we prepared to uh, discuss those individually and not as a, not as, as a consolidated motion. So.
Well, you would have that opportunity as well.
I said what I said. I meant what I said, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I, I just want to say, I agree. They need to be separate. I don't want to include them all together.
So then if, if there, if you don't have unanimous consent, you could request a motion and a second, and then vote on the motion to combine the, the discussion of those items, or you can proceed with them individually.
Well, I just heard that there's not consent.
Correct. So you have two options. You can either proceed with them individually, or you can ask for a motion to combine them, and then we would proceed with that as any other motion, a motion, a second, and a vote on that.
Well, then let me, uh, offer a motion to combine these. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those, um, we're going to take a roll call voting this. Uh, those who, well, what's your vote? Uh, trustee Pierce?
I don't want to combine. No.
Okay. Trusty Salavar?
Trustee who?
Salavar yourself.
No, 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 no combines.
You're, you're against, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Maria?
I wanted to ask, was there going to be a discussion on why we're doing that? I mean.
There's a motion to discuss, to combine these three items and, and discuss.
Which was your recommendation?
Well, I've, I've had, uh, yeah, not only mine, but I've had other people recommend that. That's the reason I'm making, we're doing this. So.
Can I ask a question from the council?
Yeah.
Um, so you explained, um, that it, because there's three items, I mean, it's the same topic, and it, and what changes have one do with the, what, between, we're doing it one way and the other? I mean, because we still have to address the other issues, aren't we, in a discussion of either one?
Correct. So if we're addressing them each individually, when you have a motion to discuss item eleven, you can't move on and discuss item twelve, you, you, because you've only opened discussion on item eleven. And so you would need to discuss that item, vote on item eleven, and then move to item twelve. Just as you do for any other agenda item.
Trusty Kane?
I was just going to say that because those three items deal with the same topic, and we're talking about in different amounts, but the same topic, it seems, it would seem appropriate to me that we would combine them.
So if they are all different amounts, then let's, let's, let's get rid of two of them. Let's focus on one. So why, why were they added if they're different amounts? That, that was my, that was going to be my whole question. If, because they are basically all the same, just different amounts. We should focus on one amount. The other two should have never been added.
Because on the discussion, I, I mean, the reason I bring it up is because on the discussion on, on either one, we're going to want to know about the others.
That's why we need to do them separate. My vote is separate if you're doing roll call.
Well, we, we have a motion that we're voting on to combine.
Yeah, I, I'd rather combine them.
Okay. Uh, trustee Salom.
Uh, I'm against the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Trusty Kane?
I'm for the motion.
All right, and trustee Wilson? And myself. Oh, trustee vote. I'm sorry, sir.
I'm in favor of it.
Say again, please.
I am in favor of the motion.
All right. And I am in favor. Right, the chair. So how do, what do we have here? Say again? Yep. All right. So the motion fails. So we will.
The motion did what?
The motion failed.
Okay, I didn't hear.
So we will discuss one at a time. Let me say.
So, Chair?
Yes, sir?
Could we address item seven first and take the other?
We can. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Let's, let's address item seven. That's your, your item. Uh, let, let me make a motion. Make a motion to consider item seven. Do I get a second?
Second.
All right. Trustee, uh, Salom, you'd like to speak to item seven?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Vianza making her way up. And if you could, uh, let's see, let me back up a little bit. Trustees, my concern on this is to try to, uh, make sure that Lone Star achieves and earns as much revenue as possible with respect to its investments. In reading the backup material and some email traffic between the administration and myself, I still could not understand how the bond dealers are getting paid. And the answer I got from the administration was, well, it's not costing us anything. I understand that. But the money's being taken out of proceeds earned by the dealer, excuse me, earned by Lone Star by the dealer, if that makes sense. So someone is making money, I believe, at the expense of Lone Star. That's as simple as I can put it, but I can't quite get that acknowledged by the administration. And I'm not opposed to the bond dealer being compensated. I just want to know what it is, because money that are taken away from us are not earning, and they're not compounding going into the future. So it doesn't matter if the bond's going to be paid off or not, or it's been defused or not. I, I, I can't make it make sense based on the answers I received. So with that, Chancellor and Dr. Vian, if y'all could help me,
Yeah.
or be really clear in spelling it out to me.
Yes, sir. So I'll make a couple points and a pro, a couple points of clarification. So the, uh, board agenda item in front of you does not pertain to the bonds, um, that we have issued per se related to our debt. Though these bonds in the board agenda item is about our investment broker-dealer services, so I do want to make that distinction. Um, when we talk about the investment broker-dealer services, the BAI, that is regarding a, um, RFQ that was issued back in April twenty twenty-two for services for a pool of vendors from nine-one to eight-thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. So that is the BAI that's in front of you. So based on that RFQ, the way that the investment pool is, is qualified, if you will, is that we will use the RFQ and the pool to be able to select uh, from that pool each time a invited quote to quote, and so each one each time has the opportunity to bid on the investment opportunity, um, and based on that best value, who has the best securities at that time for us to purchase for our investments, that is the broker-dealer in that pool that would be selected. So I just want to make that, that specific point clear. Um, when we're talking about the investments, I guess trying to break it down simply as possible, if you will, is that when we're buying the securities, there are no hard costs associated with the purchase of a securities, and the fees are not deducted from the par or the interest amount. The broker-dealers price the securities to cover their cost in what is known as making a ticket. So that is kind of what it's known at in the, in the broker's world. This allows the broker-dealer to cover their cost and make some margin of profit off of the bond or the security that we are purchasing for our investments. So there is no standard. There is not a, there's not necessarily one way to do it versus another. So different securities can be priced differently. Um, the best way I might can compare that, if you will, is if purchasing a car. So if you buy a car, sometimes it comes off the sticker price. Sometimes it comes off the financing. But in essence, it is built into the price of the security itself. So local government investment pools are compensated by charging a basis point management fee calculated daily on the fund balance of each respective pool. The cost associated with the management fee is based entirely on the type of the account and the balance in each account. The fees are deducted from the interest earnings of the entire pool, so there's no direct reduction to Lone Star's participation in the account. The pool rates are quoted net of fees. So that is, in simplest terms, the way to structure how these are made. The main hard charge that we would have associated with investments is that we are charged eleven dollars a wiring fee per transaction when the principal and interest is paid directly to Lone Star. That is the only direct fee that we would actually have to give. Now, at the bequest of the board or the Audit and Finance Committee, I'm happy to provide a full listing of all of those securities, their par rates, the interest, and all of those things so that you can have a full, accurate, um, description. There's just not a commission sheet by which I can say, here are the direct costs associated with it. It's just not the way that it's reported to us, but we have, um, entire spreadsheets that we can share, or statements from Frost, who is our holder, who could share what's coming due, what the call amount is, and the interest, if that would be helpful on behalf of the, the board.
Okay. Not necessary for me. That explanation is helpful, and it's the information that I needed.
Okay.
So the services are provided by the brokers. They're being compensated from the funds. They're not, they're not being compensated from any of the returns that come to us.
That is correct.
So now I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chancellor. And thank you, Chair.
Any other questions related to that item?
All right. So could I, uh, we're going to vote on this item. All those in favor of this item signify by saying yea.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item passes. So we're going to item eleven, and as chair, I'm going to allow a lot of latitude for discussion on item eleven. Um, because everybody needs to be heard. Everybody needs to be heard here. And we'll give everybody a chance to say what they want to say, and then we'll vote on, on each item. Okay. So do I have, uh, a motion to consider item eleven? One?
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussions? Trusty Kane?
Thank you. I really do appreciate the, the comments that, uh, Dr. Bergduff made. Um, my comments are very similar to, uh, to his in regard to this item. I did enjoy, back in, uh, June the twenty-sixth, I enjoyed the tour of this building. We looked at three rooms, including the one that we're in now. I did enjoy, back in, uh, June the twenty-sixth, I enjoyed the tour of this building. We looked at three rooms, including the one that we're in now with, uh, trustees Pierce and Saldivar. And I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Crawl and Ms. Martinez for showing us around. I respect the work that the committee has done in looking at this issue, but I disagree with their recommendation that they made from the August board meeting regarding the, the location of the, of the boardroom. And I feel that their recommendation to change the boardroom is not in the best interest of the college uh, and the people that we serve, the students, the employees and the general public. And let me explain why I say that. The current boardroom that we have on research force meets our needs. Uh, during my time as a board member and during the months that have occurred during this study, I've never heard a criticism that there are so many problems with our current boardroom that it is unfit or unsuitable for us to meet there as a board. In fact, just the opposite. It is serving us very well. And only seven years ago, over eight hundred seventy-one thousand dollars was spent by the college to renovate that boardroom to make it suitable for our needs. With that dollar figure in mind, think about the projected cost in item eleven to construct a new boardroom here at University Park, just under nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. That's a huge sum of money. And in my opinion, that cannot be justified. I think we would be making an egregious mistake to ignore these facts and walk away from our current boardroom. It simply cannot be justified from a business perspective or any other perspective, for that matter. Instead of spending these funds on a new and unnecessary boardroom, let's take a look at using these same funds to benefit our students and instructional programs across our college. That is what we should be focused on. The people who elected us have placed a trust in our stewardship of college resources, college revenues. And historically, this board has been very careful with funds in making key decisions. And I want that good judgment and adherence to financial integrity to continue. The people that we serve deserve that kind of smart decision-making from us. And so as I said at the top, I appreciate what Dr. Bergduff said. Uh, he covered a lot of what I feel as well and, and a bit more. And I think we should, I think we should make sure that we exercise the kind of judgment that our constituents would want us to use in terms of the wise decisions we make with the financial resources that we have. And I cannot support agenda item eleven.
Any other comments or discussions on item eleven?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Trusty Pierce?
First of all, let me say that, uh, with all respect to Dr. Bergduff, uh, the union does not dictate to this board what they should or should not do. I respect what he said. I respect what my colleague says, but I'm just trying to tell the board that, you know, the union does not dictate to this board what we do. Now, just as some of you have talked to other people, I have also spoken with constituents. I'm talking about ministers, nonprofit organizations. Remember, this college belongs to them too. Most of the people who go to church, they can't meet as far as the pastors, the priests and the ministers told me until in the afternoon. That's when working people meet. And we went back three years. I gave you the report. You know how many public speakers we had? Twelve. Eight of those were from Montgomery County and those were seniors who wanted to have a larger portion, a percentage of their home state exemption act. And guess what? We gave that to them and they were very happy. And that's when we see them. So uh, saying that we are for the people, yes, of course we are for the people. And I take into consideration, it was such an honor for me and personally, I really feel that, cuz I'm a former educator, to walk on U P's campus and see students, to walk on this campus. I mean, it just made me feel good, you know, because when we go to the other board meeting, we just go, we leave, we go, we leave. I don't see any interpersonal, I don't see any kind of reaction, but this place is alive. It feels good. It's warm. And I'm not gonna put any staff members on the, uh, on the spot here, but I guarantee if I ask, how many of you would be disappointed with an earlier meet time, I don't think I'd have too many notes. You know, I'm a parent, and like I said, you know, I'm a grandparent. I keep grandchildren. And what, what the ministers told me, they want their people, everything, like I said, their people are really the workers. And they're really the people, you know what, you know, where we get a lot of our students, we go to those churches, we recruit. These are the people who need their five, you know, they wanna be home at five o'clock. They're caretakers. And saying that we don't meet, we gotta meet at seven-thirty, why do we have to follow the herd? I'm progressive. I'm a change agent. Why do we have to follow the herd? Why can't we have our meetings at ten-thirty? Why shouldn't we have them at seven o'clock? Why shouldn't we do with Saint John? Why, why we, why, why can't we change this? Why can't we make it more applicable for other organizations? We are for the people. What do you think organizations are for? Nonprofits? What do you think the churches are for? You know, you spit in their face when you say that at five o'clock, that's the only, that's not what they told me. They told me that they will meet in the morning. In the afternoon, they go to see their sick and shut in. They have their, their, uh, prayer meetings, all of this choir rehearsal, all of this is done after five. So I mean, to say that, we have spent a lot of money on a lot of other foolishness that, uh, and we can go back and see some of that in the budget. So you being to tell me that we can't spend under a million dollars to have, to, to have, this is not just for a board. Now, this is to make it functional. Well, we can have organizations. We can have civic, you know, church organizations, people come in and use this building. Now, you wanna make it a community? This is what makes it for the community. Make it accessible. That other boardroom, and let me tell you something, most of the people, I think we talked about proximity. Most of Harris County, most of the colleges aren't in Harris County. Most of the people in Harris County, that's where we get our taxpayers' money from. I can call any commissioner, anybody, they will tell you that. It's not in Montgomery County where the current boardroom is. It's not. Now, it might have been a time when it was done that most of your board members were in Montgomery County, but they're not now. They're, they're not. And, and what is wrong with spending that little money to make this more accessible to the people that's closest to it? You know, sign pay, you have a lot of people, uh, at, at U P. You have a lot of people just south of it, you know? Most of, this is where most of your disadvantaged people are anyway. So if you wanna make this a, a college of the community, as was said, then you would do the right thing. Spending under a million dollars, we, we, we're talking about opening this place for, you know, schools to come in. I'm talking about small schools that wanna have graduations, you know, that, that might be an organization who might wanna put on a, a theater. I don't know, but, but it's ready for it. Uh, we're not talking about a lot of money. And as somebody says something about security, well, I mean, you know, we can rectify that. Hire extra personnel, you do it all the time. If you have, we talk about once a month. We're talking about ten months a year. So, so saying that, uh, you know, it was, you know, I, I personally, like I said, I don't see Research Boulevard as being the place where most of your community reside. That is not true. Most of them do not reside in Research Boulevard at all. So think about what you're saying when you say that you wanna reach out to the community. If you wanna reach out to them, approve this. I don't have anything written down. I didn't come with a bunch of written notes. I'm speaking from my heart. I'm speaking from my heart. I also feel for staff. Okay, who do we have? We don't have anybody from the public here today. I feel for staff people who've been at work all day, hitting the grind, and that they gotta come in at five. Just like I told the chancellor one day, he had made the comment that the investiture had been changed to February, but that was lost. You know why? People aren't functioning after five. And we're talking about money to budgets. We're talking about people making presentations. They're both alert at ten-thirty in the morning. Who's thinking after five? I'm not even alert after five. And you have me, you know, out here looking at stuff, making decisions. So if we wanna do with the best interest of the college, uh, you know, we don't have to do what all the other community colleges are doing. We've already made history by appointing the first Hispanic chancellor and a young lawyer. Why can't we continue to do these things? This is what I'm saying. There's nothing wrong with change. There's nothing wrong with moving from one, uh, place to another. I don't see any problem with it. That's just me. But I'm, I'm, I don't have a written statement, guys. I'm speaking from my heart. I would urge my colleagues to support action item eleven. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Trustee Maria, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, yes, I, uh, wanna share my thoughts also on, on this item. Uh, but before that, would I be able to ask, have a point of inquiry, like, uh, I just want a little bit of clarification? Can I do that?
Say again, sir?
I just need some, a little bit of clarification and, and, and.
Absolutely, you can.
So, um, just for the sake of clarity, uh, voting for this item commits us to spend that amount of money on, on moving over here or, or make, or at least, or, or simply moving, making a decision to change it?
It authorizes chancellor spend money.
I guess when I'm, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And chancellor, correct me if I'm misstating, cuz I didn't create the agenda items, but I, I believe eleven, twelve and thirteen are procurement items. They're for construction. The, the motions to change, there's one to change the location, one to change the time. Those are policy changes in sixteen and seventeen. Um, I think I'll let the chancellor address.
What is your question, ma'am?
I just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything additional to add. I don't have a question. I believe the first three items are construction.
I do not have anything additional, Ted.
Well, and I, and my question, uh, chancellor is, um, what effect does it have, uh, I guess legally or whatever? I mean, do we have to commit, do we have to move forward if even if we find something different that, that we don't like about it or?
I, I would defer to the lawyers in the room to answer your legal questions. Trustee, what do you?
So, uh, as I read the item, that item eleven, it is to authorize the expenditure of money to refurbish. I, and twelve and thirteen are the same. They're just different plans. As I read these items, you're authorizing the expenditure of money because it is over the, um, chancellor's signature authority in your policies. It doesn't commit you to spending that money. It would just authorize, um, the expenditure.
Okay. And does it mean, um, I mean, cuz we, how did we come up with that number? I guess, did, do we have a list of what?
Sure, that one I can answer. Um, so, um, at the request of Chair Stoma, um, he asked at the, after the last meeting to essentially, uh, produce some sort of estimates. Cuz if you will recall, there was a discussion about, at some point, some members of the board said um, that that wasn't necessary. And then there was a back and forth about whether or not we needed quotes. So Chair Stoma instructed me to get, um, estimates. So those are estimates. So I can say that the breakdown for nine hundred and eighty-seven uh, thousand dollars is, uh, not to exceed some. Um, most of it is technology in the facility. So the I T equipment to essentially, um, outfit the room. Um, there's something in there for the dyes and then there's a contingency account because again, because they're in their estimates. They're not quotes. They're not, there's not, um, cuz frankly, um, as the chief executive officer of this institution, I don't know what the board is going to vote tonight. So I have no idea whether we're gonna spend a million, one point six million, three hundred. If you look at, um, action item, um, if you look at action item, um, I wanna make sure I say the right one. If you look at action item sixteen, technically you can move the board meeting and spend no money. So there's about four different contingencies tonight.
Okay.
Right? And so as a steward of taxpayer money, we didn't wanna spend money getting designs for buildings that we may not need or rooms that we may not need to renovate. So after tonight, if the board approves one of these agenda items, then we will go out with some more certainty than tonight to get those quotes, sir. And we will have design drawings and et cetera.
And if it turns out it's a lot more, do we, can we back, back out of it or?
Sir, if it's a lot more than what you approved consistent with every action item for the last twelve years that I have sat in a board meeting, the administration cannot spend beyond that sum. So if it's a lot more, then it would be illegal for me to spend um, over nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars beyond the board authority.
Thank you, chancellor. Okay, so let me just go ahead and share quickly, share some of my thoughts on this. Obviously, I'm, uh, I'd like to have as much due diligence on this issue. Um, I, let me start off by, by first saying that I, I, I do support uh, the idea of, uh, moving our location. I think I men, I mentioned it last time. Um, I, uh, you know, this is what my heart tells me. So my, you know, I'm a little more, I'm a bit partial to. I mean, I've been to a lot of events here. A really, really good feeling, you know, a really positive environment. Uh, we, I started talking before the meeting about a, a community, serving as a community resource. I could see all the wonderful uh, ways that could happen. I think, um, but, but when I start thinking about that, I mean, I'm thinking of renderings. I wanna, you know, I wanna see what are we talking about? What kind of ideas? Maybe we wanna spend more, you know, not less. You know, I, I just have so many questions. So that's, uh, I think, um, like I said, my heart tells me that, that, uh, like my emotional side wants to tell me to do it. But I don't think I wanna vote in my heart today. I, I, I wanna make sure that, uh, you know, I'm doing, you know, as, as, um, my role as a trustee, you know, fiduciary to, 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 to the public. I wanna make sure we made a correct decision. I, y'all recall last, last month, I, I did, I, I did suggest we, you know, we don't need to wait. Let's come over here. That was my suggest, you know, one of my, my thought. Um, and maybe even try other places if we think we should also, I mean, some other, I'm sure some other presidents can convince us their place is the ideal place. So all that to say that, um, there's so many ways this can go. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm hesitant to commit to any, any, any one item. I mean, uh, can we continue to meet here? I mean, I'm willing to, to vote on the, what is it, on the sixteen, uh, to change it, but without having to spend money until we know for sure, something like that? I mean, I don't know. I'm just talking out loud, uh, thinking out loud here. Um, but so those, that's, just those are, that's, that's, those are my thoughts.
All right. Any other discussions or comments?
I, I have a comment.
Go ahead, trustee Saldivar.
My spot too.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you, chairman. Um, I do wanna say something before we do the vote, but I wanna also clarify that, um, I've been to this nice place a couple of year back, several times, actually.
Trustee Salvar, could you move a little closer, please?
I've been to this particular sort of room several years back. Um, you know, during several events where the community and the, you know, students and the professors came here to celebrate, uh, a lot of different initiatives. And I just thought it was one of the most wonderful places that a community college, um, could have. And what I like about this new idea to transform this space into a boardroom fascinates me because we wanna make sure in the promise to be good stewards to taxpayers' money, we're actually using this location not only as a boardroom, but also as a facility for the community, right, for, um, professors or students. Versus what we have currently, we have a boardroom that is just stagnant. I don't know if that particular boardroom has been used in the past for any type of community meetings. I don't know. It might have. I have no idea. Currently, I just see it as a stagnant boardroom where we did facilitate and allocated funding to make it better. But it's just sitting there, you know, for us doing board meetings versus what we have, what we could have now is use this particular center again as boardroom, but also as community. So I just wanna make sure and sort of reiterate that this is a good opportunity for us, you know, to make sure that this place, whatever we use or whatever we pass in, in the budget, that it's also used for the community. And I think this serves it well. Um, although I really appreciate, um, trustee Kane's, your eloquent words. Um, I do not agree with. Um, although I really appreciate, um, trustee Kane's, your eloquent words, um, I do not agree with you. Um, I think, just having said this, I think, um, you know, this, we are a college for the community, for the people, and what we're going to have here, should it pass, would be just that. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? Just Salwa?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I'd like to go back to the very beginning of this process. A trustee expressed an interest in looking at a change of venue, trustee Pierce. And the board chair appointed a committee. The committee was trustee Pierce, trustee Salivar and myself. The committee was charged to do the work of investigating, looking into evaluating and making a recommendation. That committee did their work. They did their due diligence. I participated in some, but not all of the visits. I had to ask Mr. Crawl and, uh, Maricela and, and a couple of others to meet me here because I was unable to get away from work when, when the other two trustees, uh, uh, showed up for the tour. Trustee Kane was not on the committee and showed up for the tour anyway, which I thought, I, well, let me put it this way. I would not have done that since I was not appointed to the committee. Um, I think that may have been an effort to unduly influence the committee. I think that's unfair, and I think it's unfortunate. But as I said, I would not have done that. Uh, I think the committee, I respect committee process and our, whatever that committee is, let that committee do their work. Let them come forward with their recommendation, respect their recommendation, debate the merits at the table and take a vote. And trustee Pierce has done a fabulous job leading this process and communicating with everyone within the administration and the campuses and physically touring them. So trustee Pierce, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think it is the recommendation of your committee to approve action item 11. You did not recommend or request item 13 or 12 or whatever the other item is. Uh, 12 and 13, those were just put on the agenda.
They were put on the agenda by my request.
Well, there you go.
That's just pointing that where it belongs.
Then, then you own it.
I do.
So you can say that, and I appreciate you saying that, but it, it, it doesn't alter or change my opinion to recum- to, to respect the work of the committee. And I think you're making, trustee Pierce, you're making a recommendation night after your work and after the committee's work for number 11. I'll also say, I think it was very disingenuous of Bergdorf to only focus on the one point six million dollar item. The public doesn't know, you didn't happen to say, so I'll say it, the other two items have lower amounts. So I think there might be a term, maybe gaslighting. I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm, I'm too old for all these social terms now. But in my generation, I would just say it was disingenuous to only focus on that one I, that one amount. So that's the high end, and that's the high end of the item that was not the recommendation of the committee. So I just am stating the obvious and I just want to be on the record. Uh, we talk about transparency. We talk about honesty. We talk about integrity. We talk about fairness. Uh, trustee Kane, I just, I disagree with your comments, but I respect your comments. So I'm not going to, you know, parse the words or anything. Uh, thank you for your perspective on it. Uh, we just happen to disagree. So that's the history. That's where we are. That's a reflection of the work that the committee was done. It was appointed by the chair. And I'm supportive of item 11 because it came forth from the committee. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Well, soon.
Mm-hmm. Um, let me just say, I appreciate everybody's comments. I appreciate the committee taking the time because that, that takes time to be on a committee and having to do the footwork to bring it back to the board. And that does take time. Um, trustee Kane, I appreciate your comments. Trust, uh, Dr. Bergdorf, I appreciate your comments, but I'm here as a blue collar worker. I'm a bus driver. I don't get off until five fifteen every day. So when I make it here, I have to take off work, meaning essentially if someone outside that work, that doesn't work at Lone Star, if they coming from the public and they don't get off till five, but their kids get out of school at four thirty. So now you have to make arrangements to make sure you're here at the meeting at five. I have a, my break, I do a AM route and PM. I have a split shift. So that middle part is, is perfect for people who are blue collar workers who do have, um, lunch around that time, who do have a split shift of four or five hours at that time. That's the perfect opportunity. In, in my, that's just me as, as somebody, not only that sits on the board, but also has a job that requires me to be at work until at least five o'clock. Not, not, not misstating, not only do I have to, uh, do I get off at five fifteen, but where I work, I have to drive to the Woodlands, which would give me about an hour forty-five to two hour drive from where I get off work. So by that time, I would miss the meeting. Right? And I think about other parents who, right now, as you know, ISDs have taken away bus routes, who are sitting in lines for two hours. How are they going to get here at five o'clock? They're, they can't. They don't get their kids. Sometimes I know some parents who doesn't get their kids to six o'clock, waiting in a car line because there's no bus transportation. So we have to be very mindful how we talk about taxpayers, how we talk about the public. What about you all sitting in here? I'm sure some of you all have school age kids you haven't saw all day, but it's six thirty-six. You probably won't get home because of traffic and rain until eight thirty-nine o'clock. When you, when we were at the Woodlands, the last time we had a major rain, the four females on the board were on the phone, ca- talking to each other. Because I, I was the last one home. I got home at ten o'clock, coming from the Woodlands in that rain. So we want to talk about safety. We want to talk about what's convenient. That's not convenient and safe for me. I have to be up at three o'clock in the morning. How is getting home at ten o'clock good and safe for me? How is the faculty that's sitting here that have young kids getting home eight, nine o'clock? They're in the bed. So you haven't seen your child all day? You haven't hugged your child all day? You couldn't have dinner at, at the table with your child all day? Because you were here. So we have to be mindful and think about not just the college or what, what somebody did seven years ago to a room to improve it that nobody ever uses but us. That's not convenient. The community does. I understand we have community down there, but I guarantee we have more community here in Harris County. This location is a centralized location. Meeting in the, meeting in the midday, normally when there are luncheons, I see a whole bunch of staff and faculty at the luncheons. I don't see anybody complaining about them not being in, in the classroom then. I'm sure some, some staff would probably appreciate it if they could, because they, they work, they, they have classes in the PM, so they can never get to the meeting. I don't know whose idea was to do it at five o'clock, and I really don't care. We're in a time now of progressive change. This is the time to change. We need to keep the momentum of change. We can't keep in the old ways. That is the problem. We have to start thinking forward. We have to be forward thinkers. When people in business they meet, they meet midday morning because they have luncheons. They don't wait till five o'clock when they know everybody's going to be in traffic, trying to get kids. Some people have part-time jobs, so they definitely not going to make it. Or some people go in late, so that morning meeting might be just perfect for them. Our community, I've spoken to community members. They are, they don't want to drive to the Woodlands at all. At all. I'm a product of Cyfair ISD. I know people in Cyfair, they, they, they said they're not, they would never come to the Woodlands. It's too long of a drive at that time of day. So we have to be mindful and be conscious of what we're talking. We can't just be talking and not, and not listening to the people who are actually experiencing what you're talking or what, or not experiencing what you're talking. So I just think that we need to be careful in how we try to minimize other people's ideas, thoughts and things that they do in their lives. We have to be very, very considerate and being considerate of staff. I know you might say, oh, it's only one day a month. It doesn't matter. That might be the day their child have something. It's a lot of events going on in the afternoon. Trustee Bruce saw it. She has an event right now and, and where she, where she is right now. She can't be here. That is your prime example right there. She can't be here. But if it was in the AM, I'm sure she can make it. So we have to be very mindful and I, and I beseech this board to please take personal out of it. You want to talk about law enforcement? We, this is one of the safest. We have the chancellor here. I guarantee they're not going to let another come on no campus, especially where the chancellor is. And if y'all feel that this campus, no, this campus is not safe, or you have an issue with safety, then maybe we need to close it down. Because if, if you, if you don't feel the board will be safe, the chancellor be safe, then how are the students safe? So if you want to talk about it, let's talk and stop throwing out un- unreal things.
Okay. Can I, can I add?
Trustee Maria.
Yeah, just, um, cou- couple of comments again. Since there seems to be support for the idea of doing this, I think, guys, uh, sense, you know, consensus on, on wanting to do this. Um, I mean, let me know if I get out of line here with that motion, but, um, is it a possibility that we could, uh, uh, make the intent, vote for the intention of doing it and, and instead approve like, uh, a, a study or something to do it right? I mean, I just don't like this, um, because I really don't know what that, that money is going to or whether, I guess my concern is that it's not enough. I mean, I wouldn't, you know, that we're going to be stuck with not being able to spend more than that amount. Um, and also, I mean, you know, I, I know what's a rush. I guess it's my, my question here. Um, because I, I, I'm excited about the options, uh, potential, uh, you know? But I mean, I think we're, we're kind of just stuck in here and whether yes or no, whatever. If we do it, I want to do it right. You know, so.
It's a question, man, trustee Maria. So when the committee was appointed, how many months ago did you appoint the committee?
I think we did, did it in June.
Okay, this September. They have done their due diligence.
No, I'm talking about beyond that.
I get it. Let me finish. They've done their due diligence. They've done the footwork, correct? Now, as somebody who's been a commit, who was a committee chair, and if, when I do my due diligence and footwork, and then I come and bring it to my, my peers, and then I have people say, well, you know, that shows you don't trust me. So if you don't trust me, then I mean, it's some problems. We have to be able to trust the committee in what they are saying, what their recommend- recommendations are. We can't say, well, we want to appoint this committee, have the committee to do their due diligence, and then come back and say, well, I still, no, we can't do that. That's a disrespect to the committee.
If, if I may, if, if I may, as a point of order, let's stay to the topic.
Okay.
I mean, you make good points and then that's not the, that's not the discussion though. So you have the floor, trustee Maria.
No, thank you, no, and I, I, I appreciate, uh, the comments, I think, um, and, uh, but I'm just think, I'm just saying that where we are now, after the board reviewed it and after the board, my recommendation, um, the next step is, uh, to lay it out, right? To, to, to put, uh, to, to stab, to build it up, right? I guess. And unless there's an urgency to do it, and it may be, I don't know if there's an urgency that behind the recommendation, but if there's not, I mean, could we proceed with, uh, recommending that let our chancellor, uh, pursue this further? Like you said, and, you know, I know he says that he can't make any expenses without our approval, but if we approve that we're going to do it, then he can proceed with giving us a number, a correct number, and then we can at that point decide whether it's enough or not so much. I mean, that's the only thing.
But from my understanding, that's what this is for. This is to approve so he can move to the next step. We can't move to the next step unless we get the.
If I'm at a point of order. Trustee Maria, what you're, what you're saying, uh, can be done. Um, but it's not a, a part of what's before us as a decision. Um, you know, that, that's just the way we, we are right now. So we're at a point where we, we're on this item 11, where we would authorize the chancellor to spend a amount not to exceed, what, nine hundred K? Is it something like that?
Yes, sir.
To make this, this room ready and safe for us, the whole meetings here. This is what this item is about. Um, so to, to deviate from that, I don't know if there's a, you know, a procedure to do that. I mean, I don't think there is, but I mean.
Well, you, you can make an amendment, but I think what's being contemplated here, or what trustee Maria is suggesting is maybe outside the scope of this item and, and something different entirely.
Right.
So if that was the route the board wanted to go, then I might suggest, you know, vote against these items and that's something different.
An amendment cannot say to not mention the, the amount or no?
I'm sorry.
Amendment to remove the, the amount or unto, unto further notice or something?
Well, so the amendment, if the amendment removes the amount from this agenda item, then you are authorizing the chancellor to negotiate and execute contracts to, um, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to read as I'm speaking, to purchase goods and services to build the boardroom. You're removing the limitation. Is if you remove the amount, you're removing the limitation.
One more question, I promise. If we need, and, and if we, if doing, when carried out the order, if we prove this and we, you know, construction's expensive, you know, lately, you know, it's, I mean, if we decide that we, we need more, would we be able to, at that point, uh, uh, add more or whatever, or change the contract?
As, as the chancellor said, if, if he reached a point and he thought more money was required, he would have to bring that back to the board for approval. So this, if, if this item is approved, it only authorizes him to spend up to the amount listed on the agenda item.
Got you. Thank you. Anything else? Well, it's my turn. You know, when trustee Pierce brought this up in discussion, things in May, uh, I guess at first, the thought I had was, why do we want to do this? But the discussions ensued and there were a number of trustees here who are interested, you know, in this, in this move. So I did what I thought was my duty as a chair and a responsibility to these trustees, as I appointed a committee, a special committee, and trustee Pierce so graciously agreed to serve as chair, uh, uh, to that committee. And they did a great job. Um, I mean, and I'm a business guy. They did a great job in looking at the options, you know, the, the, the pluses and the minuses, so to speak. The report was a concise report. So I want to commend them. I want to say this is not a judgment on them. It's not. You know, this is, is an important consideration for the board. It's just kind of evolved this way because we are nine members and we all, we all nine have different opinions. Now I'm going to give them up. Um, so when I heard it, you know, I formed the committee and I let them do their due diligence, you know, working, do what they did. Uh, I, you know, put in writing and trustee Pierce, publish it to all of you, that, hey, I'm the person who's going to benefit the most here. I live in Cypress. I have to drive to the Woodlands an hour or more based on traffic. Quite honestly, you know, driving in the dark for me is getting worse because I've got cataracts for me. I'm just a, an old guy, you know? And maybe you're right. They need, we need to make room for the new maybe. But the point is, you know, it benefits me the most. And I'm going, hey, that's not a bad idea. But then my conscience started talking to me and, and it said, well, were you elected to do what's good for you? No, I was not. So I had to put my trustee hat on and ask myself, is this good for this, for the students, for the taxpayers, for the faculty, for the staff, for the institution as a whole? You know, to take, I don't care if it's nine hundred thousand, one point six million, to take this money and spend it on, this effort, which gives no. which gives no benefits to anyone but the board. And I just couldn't get past that, you see? Because I can take this money and I can give it to any one of you, or hey, we could divvy it up. We could put it in into the online college, right? I'm sure you got room over there for improvements. Heck, we were in an audit meeting last week, and I'm going to give the chancellor a lot of credit. He has reorganized the audit committee and got it redirected to where it could serve this institution. And they could use this money to address open audit issues that would make this institution operate much better and have less risk. I talked to the chief, chief of police, to say, how how secure is this place? Uh, chief says he can secure this building, secure this room, and I believe him. But he also could use that money to share out the security, not only in the system, but of this room. So you see, there is a lot of other benefits. I mean, we could use it, you know, at East Alden, you could use it at Houston North, you could use it certainly at North Harris, Kingwood, let's go down the list of where you can't, you could take 900 K or 1.6 million, we can just divvy it up any way you want and apply it across the system to help. Also, we had, you know, we just had a budget discussion. This was not planned in the budget. This is not in the chancellor's 2025 operating budget. We did not plan for this. If indeed we would have planned for it, put it in our budget and approved it, then we wouldn't be having this conversation. But we weren't. So he's got to take that money from somewhere else. He just spent money realigning the audit. The audit function here. So how many times can you dip into your budget before you have to go into your reserves, right? Which is not a good idea uh, to find money to do stuff like this? When it doesn't benefit the institution, the students, the faculty, staff, taxpayers. So I came to my judgment in that this is not a good business decision. It's not a good decision for this institution. And there are certainly no benefits that this institution will will be realized from those. Now, I could go on and on about opportunities where we could take this money and do do some good in this institution, do do some good for the public, do some good for for students who can't afford to come here. For that poor. You know, even even set up another scholarship at the at at the foundation. That's a good use of money, isn't it? So I I just couldn't get past that. I think it's a bad business decision. I just don't see any benefit, and it's unplanned to the budget. Therefore, I cannot support this move in any way, shape, or form. And that's my decision as as trustee representing District One in Cyfair. That's what my stand on is. Any other discussions?
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you for your.
I mean, I'm done.
I know, I said, thank you. I'm just saying thank you for your opinion. And I appreciate everybody giving their opinion and their viewpoint um in this discussion.
That's what we're here for.
I appreciate that because sometimes it don't be like that, so.
Chair, may I?
Trustee Kane.
May I add some things? Several things. Starting on on a personal level to to trustee Sullivan, I think it's important for you to know that on June the 26th, when I was on that tour with trustees Pierce and Saldivar, I had checked with the chancellor first and received permission to be on that tour. So I think that it's important for you to understand that I checked and had permission in order to be there that, on that occasion. With regard to to this room itself, creating a boardroom in this room is not going to enhance this room for the community. And the reason I say that is, over the years, I have been in this room on multiple occasions for all kinds of events. Those events go on all year long. Creating a boardroom here is not going to increase the activity of this room because it is already full of activities throughout the year that I have personally experienced. So with with all due respect to my colleagues who who feel that that that's going to start bringing people in that haven't already been here, that's just not going to happen. And then the third thing is we have to make good business decisions because we are dealing with taxpayer dollars, we are dealing with state funding, we are doing with, dealing with students' tuition and fees, and we can't just set aside those enormous sums of money that are required under item 11 to create this boardroom. I mean, yes, we don't have a definite cost, but the approximation is around $990,000. And as I said before, you couple that with walking away from a current boardroom where we've already invested over $871,000. And and if you're a taxpayer, you have to be thinking to yourself, what? What are they thinking? I mean, we just don't have that kind of money to burn. So let's let's do the smart thing. Let's stay where we are, which is perfectly fine. And let's make sure that the money is well spent. And as Chair Stoner said a moment ago, and I said a few moments before that, if we have this kind of money at our disposal, let's put it where it really counts the most. And that's with students and instructional programs.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I have a point of privilege?
Absolutely.
Okay, I I I didn't want to say this, but I'm going to say it. You know, I've earned, I'm like a, the lady sisters, I've I've earned my right to say what I want to say. You know, this appears to me, and maybe I'm wrong, might be, that I see more minorities fighting to bring their communities in than I see anything else. Now, that's just what I've seen. Now, first of all, I'm a woman, and I am black, so I'm a minority twice. I, uh, and I'm just looking around this table. And with the exception of, uh, my colleague trustee Sullivan, and I own him, you know, I mean, you know, own him as my, you know, almost my brother. But I don't like what I'm seeing because, uh, most of the community that I'm trying to bring aboard are those who are minority and disadvantaged. And if we're talking about a lousy, less than a million dollars, are we going to sell out our disadvantaged and minority communities? Okay, where's the heart here? All I hear is business, business, business. Okay, well, you know, fine. Is less than a billion dollars more important than your minority and disadvantaged communities? But that's what you're saying. I mean, that's what I'm getting. Nobody else may not get that, but that's what I'm getting. And I, this is what I see. I'm sorry. And then also, you know, it doesn't, I know I'm outspoken, so that might be a little bit anti-Pierce, too, but that doesn't bother me. You know, I've been in a lot of battles. I have the scores to show it. But as I look across this room, I see, you know, it's it's a a downbeat of a minority thing. We are trying to bring, the Woodlands is definitely not minority. Come on now, you have some, you know, you have some elite minorities there, but it's not, we're wrong. 85% of the people that we're trying to reach, they live in uh, trustee, uh, uh, Maria's, Maria's community, live in trustee Salivar's community, live in trustee um, Wilson's community, and they live in mine. And I'm not going to sit here and not fight for them. Now, you can call it a business deal, but I'm talking about people. And people are not widgets. They have hearts. And a lot, and I would tell you about the communities because, you know, I represent, well, they always feel left out. I always feel left out. And where, and you can say whatever you want to say. I don't know why the boardroom was built where it was built. I don't know. I wasn't on the board. That must have been a long time ago, but I'm sure that was a decision made by board members. And as I said, we're trying to move on. We're trying to move forward here. Let's not leave our disadvantaged, our minority communities behind. Because this is what you're saying. And for anybody who's out here and is trying to win an election, you're not going to win on that. You can't leave your minority communities behind. We know that Lone Star makes up what the majority of students at Lone Star are minority, and they don't have any money, and most of them are disadvantaged. I've been in education over 42 years. I fought superintendents on down. This is what I see. I'm just seeing a minority of the people want this to be and the other doesn't. So just take it from there.
Thank you. Trustee Kane?
I under- I understand your point, but you may have missed my point. Uh, the last thing that I would want to do is leave minorities behind. And that's why I stated that rather than spend the money on an unnecessary boardroom, it would be much more appropriate to allocate that money to students, all students that attend Lone Star College, many of whom are minority students, many of whom come from disadvantaged families. That's why I made the point. I would like to see the money go there.
The money, sir, is already there. You are leaving that out. We're talking about the students. What about the families? What about the parents? What about all these other minority people that you're leaving behind? Listen, we take care of our students. I don't think Lone Star is hurting financially at all. And I don't see why leaving out, like you said, the majority, you just said the majority of the students at Lone Star are minority. Well, who do you think the parents are? Who do you think the communities that come out of are? That's minority, too. So you can't say, you you talking about less than a million dollars? I mean, seriously? Come on, give me a break.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Running long, folks.
I know, I get it, but this is important and we need it. Um, let me just say this. Uh, Chancellor, have y'all put the name of Dr. Head on the on the wall?
Uh, we're in the process of putting it on. It was supposed to actually be put on today. So I can't confirm because I haven't been over there to check it out, but um, I guess, Joan, have we put it up yet? No.
Okay, to my point, and I asked for a reason. You're talking about where the money could go and where it could be spent. But that wasn't a item, a thing that did not need to be, money need to be spent on. So we have to remember, it can't, you can't want it when it benefits you, but when it doesn't benefit you, then not want it. And we have to be very mindful of that. Because Dr. Kane, you were the one who fought for the naming um, of um, getting it for Dr. Head. That could have waited. So let's not talk about where the money could go because I'm I'm in agreement with trustee Pierce.
How much does it cost, Chancellor? Put that plaque up.
The student, what?
I'd rather, I'd rather ask Joan because Joan would know. Joan, how much did that all cost, the entire thing for Dr. Head? How much? Couple thousand?
Okay, that couple of thousands still could have went to students regardless. Any dollar spent, because any dollar spent on what we're doing could still go to students regardless. I feel Lone Star is financially um, stable. Um, and I think that when you talk about, Dr. Kane, this room being used for other, for already being used for public um, events, it is. So why not put the board where the public is? Why not have the board here where the public is? You see what I'm saying? Versus going to the Woodlands. The money that was spent to redo that boardroom in the Woodlands, I wasn't here on that board. I I don't know who who all got those contracts. I don't know the reasoning for redoing the board. What was the reason for redoing that room? You see what I'm saying? So we can't just pick and choose when it fits. We got, if we gonna do it, we gonna do it.
Yeah, we're running long, folks. We still got an agenda, and we still got a closed session to go through. Any other comments on this? Are we ready to vote on it? So just to bring us back.
One question.
Yes.
I think when you when you spoke your mind, you mentioned that there was a committee report?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I never received that.
Yeah, well, it was distributed. I mean, it was distributed at the, was it the June meeting, I think? Or was it distributed? Or was it August? It was in August? Yes, yeah, it was. I mean, we can. I don't know if we have a a copy somewhere. Trustee Pierce, do you guys have a copy you could give? Probably not here, huh? We can get you a copy of that trustee vote, but we don't have one handy.
Can somebody send me?
We asked if somebody emailed.
A trustee vote, I can send that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So this brings back around to what we're doing. Uh, we have a motion and a second to consider item 11. We've had a discussion. So now I'm going to do a roll call vote. It's either, I guess, yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Salivar?
Yes.
Trustee Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Saliva?
Yes.
Trustee Kane?
No.
And trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee vote? And myself, I'm a no. So the item passes. Okay, any other questions?
Um, so since this item passed, 12, 13?
11.
I mean.
We still have to consider.
I know, that's what I'm asking.
12 and 13.
But if those are voted yes, would those council just? Or how does that work?
Yeah, since they're similar but for different expenditures, Mr. Chair, you do have the authority to pull, but I I think um, you may want to get.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Uh, because if we approve the others, then it really gets.
It would, it would create conflicting instructions to the administration.
So, uh, I'm going to pull items 12 and 13. Is that okay? I'm just going to pull items 12 and 13. All right. So that goes, now we go to.
I'm sorry, Chair, are you pulling them or withdrawing them?
What am I doing?
Withdrawing would mean they wouldn't come back. Is that correct? Is that, I'm I'm not clear on the distinction.
The verb is when you pull for separate consideration, but you withdraw from.
Understood, there's some, yeah, confusion with the pulling from the consent agenda, so.
Withdraw.
I think the intention was to withdraw.
I just wanted to be clear because I'm the one that has to operationalize all this.
Got it, okay. Then I withdraw items 12 and 13. All right. Where are we? 16. Alrighty, item 16. How do I go to the item 16? I can't seem to find items. Okay. Item 16, I have a motion to consider item 16. Second.
Second.
Any discussions on item 16?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yep. Do 16 and 17 go together?
Well, we, no, we're taking them separately.
Okay, so so that I'm clear, um, I I'm not clear on the difference between item 16 and 17.
Well, if I understand, and I can stand corrected, believe me, item 16 is to change the location to this building. Right?
Um, so item 16 is actually to change the policy to make this location the meeting place for the board meeting.
Changes the policy.
Yes, sir.
Next, this is the meeting room.
Yes, sir. Um, seventeen changes the time.
And seventeen, we'd vote on the time.
Thank you.
Is that clear? Bet you're wondering, what is sixteen?
I understand now, thank you.
Yeah. Be interesting. So, do I have a motion? Uh, to discuss, to, to discuss it. Did we already do this? Okay. All right, any discussions on item sixteen? And let's, uh, let's vote. Uh, Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Salivar? Trustee Maria? Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Kane?
No.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee vote?
No.
And I vote no. The item passes. Okay. Item seventeen. Do I have a motion to consider item seventeen?
So moved.
Second. All right, any discussions on item seventeen?
Okay, I can start. Is that the change of time, right?
Yes, about the time.
About the time change?
Changes the policy which changes.
Okay, okay, well.
And, Dr. Kane?
Yes, I, I'm opposed to changing the time, and I'd like a moment.
Yeah, go ahead.
To explain. So it's been suggested that we meet in the morning hours, and statements were made at the August board meeting about the University of Houston and Prairie View University, uh, having morning meetings. The fact of the matter is, we don't compare ourselves to four-year universities. Their trustees are not elected. They are appointed by the governor. And in the absence of gubernatorial appointment, oftentimes, it's a collaboration between the chancellor, the board of trustees of the four-year university, and sometimes the faculty senate to choose um, board meeting times and, and members and so on and so forth. We are, however, elected. We're elected to serve those who live within our twenty-seven hundred square miles, as well as our students and employees, whether they live within our twenty-seven hundred mi- miles or not. Our comparison group is the other community colleges in Texas, most notably those that are the largest. And among the nine largest community colleges in Texas, and some of this you heard from Dr. Bergduff earlier, that we compare ourselves to, no one has a morning meeting. They are all in the afternoon or early evening. Dallas, four P M., Alamo, six P M., Collin County, five thirty P M., Houston, four P M., Tarrant County, six P M., San Jacinto, seven P M., Austin, four fifteen P M., El Paso, four thirty P M., South Texas, five thirty P M. There's no perfect time that will meet everyone's schedule. But why has our comparison group chosen late afternoon or early evening meetings? It's because those are the times that reflect when the people that they serve and the people that we serve, the students, the employees, and the general public are most available, and when it's most convenient for them to attend either in person or online. Therefore, I'm opposed to item seventeen, which would change our meeting time to ten thirty A M. We know when we run for election to the board that there will be travel to meetings and events, sometimes during the day, like the recent convocation, and sometimes in the evening, like the law enforcement academy that I mentioned earlier in this meeting. As I said, there's no perfect time. There's no perfect time, but when you consider that the majority of Lone Star students are in class between eight A M. and two P M., and therefore our faculty and staff working with those students, then ten thirty is not a good time. A much better time is late afternoon or even evening. But the five P M. time takes into account students, employees, and the general public. That's why I would, am opposed to changing the time. I would like to keep it at five P M.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, yes, I do. Let me say this again. I'm going into my senior golden status. Now, we have four females on this board, and I challenge any male on this board to tell me that you want your wife driving home at ten o'clock at night. No, you don't. As a matter of fact, I think it's really, I, you know, my husband calls me, and if I'm not talking to one of the females, I'm talking to him until I get home. He wants to make sure his wife is home safe. Now, if you, research says that if you do not want to get anything done, have your meeting at five o'clock on the Thursday. You won't get anything done, trust me. People are more alert, their brains are churning at ten thirty. And let me tell you about, you talk about students being in class. Look, I would have loved to have been a student at U P and be able to sit in on a board meeting at ten thirty. I want to know how my board operates. No better time than to have students come in and view the board and see exactly what your trustees do. I've been on a gubernatorial board, okay? I've been appointed by the governor. I consider being on this board elected just as important or even better than sitting on a gubernatorial board. I've been a regent, those regents, I mean, you know, really, seriously. You're not getting anything done at five o'clock. Listen, I feel for myself. I'm retired, and I'm not retired. I don't want to be in traffic at three o'clock trying to get to a board meeting at five o'clock. I'm not at my best when I get here. I was telling somebody today, somebody airborne right in front of me trying to get here, it was raining. I thought, oh, my God, you know what I'm saying? And here it is, it was four o'clock. But I'm just saying, if you don't care about anything else, think about the, not just the board females, you got females sitting in this audience. They're trying to get home. We're talking about, non, it's dark at five thirty in the wintertime. If nothing else, feel for your board members. So, you know, we have males on this board. I know that you're not all showing this. I know that some of you have wives. How do you feel about your wife driving an hour and a half? And like I said, the last time we had this rain, and I don't know if it's still raining out here, I was on the phone with Trustee Wilson. She turned in her driveway. It was ten o'clock at night. My husband worries about me from the minute I leave here. He say, you call me. And listen, guys, I have a weapon in my car. And I have mace. I'm one of these packing grandmas, okay? Because I'm not gonna take any chance. But if that, that car went airborne on me today, just think if I was going home at nine o'clock tonight and that car went airborne, I would not have seen it, because I, I try to drive cautiously. You know, like a little old lady. This is, you will get more participation, believe me. We did the stats. There was fourteen people who signed out, signed up to make public comments. I'm gonna say it again. Eight of those people were from Montgomery County, and they came down to talk about their homestead taxes. If we're gonna play, we're supposed to be one of the premier, you know, college systems in Texas. And like I said, let's move forward. We don't have to meet at seven o'clock and five o'clock. There's nothing wrong with meeting at ten thirty. And I don't see a lot of faculty here. I see staff. And surely, they wouldn't mind coming to a meeting at ten thirty if they could go back to their jobs at noon. Well, I don't see any faculty here, and I didn't see them at five o'clock. So that's nonsense. There will be no interruption, I think, as Trustee Salivar once said, in any public, you know, public participation. Because we've done, we, we, we ran the, the numbers on that. So I'm saying to you and this board, and I'm especially to the men. Look out here. You see more women than anybody sitting here. Is it fair and secure for us to be going home at eight and nine o'clock at night when it's dark? No, it isn't. Think about it. Would you want your daughters, your wives? It is not safe. Look, this world is not safe at all. And at least give me a head start. Let me be able to see what's in front of me. Maybe I could, I may not be able to outrun anybody, but at least I know I can drive to the nearest, uh, what was that called, police substation? I could do that. This is not, this is not just about our safety. Research says that you're both safe in the daytime. Just like I said, you can avoid traffic accidents, just like I, this guy airborne in front of me today. It's a good thing it was, you know, daylight, I could see. And when I was going home, the last time we had the big rain, water was rising, people were turning around, and if I, you know, I mean, it's a good thing I had good headlights, I could see, and I turned around too. I'm just saying, it's just ludicrous. You don't get a lot done at five o'clock. If you don't want participation, have you, continue to have them at five o'clock. Continue to do that. If you don't want to get anything done, well, continue to have them at five o'clock. I'm about getting things done, and I'm about getting participation. And the best way to do that is a mid-morning meeting. I am going to vote for a ten thirty meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussions on this?
Yes, I would like to say.
Okay.
Back to my previous comments. I work a split shift. I sit on the board. I'm telling you that five o'clock is hard for people. It's hard for, I'm a working-class, blue-collar worker. It's hard, especially if you have kids. I'm gonna state it again. People in this room have kids. They haven't been home all day. It's seven twenty. How fair is it? It's not. You're saying that why are we comparing ourselves to four-year colleges? We are a four-year college. We have four programs that are four-year baccalaureate programs. That's, that's, that's how come we can compare, because we're in that same field. We're running, we're, we're running with the four-year universities, because we are a two and four-year university. So don't discount that of the achievements that the college has done. That, that ten thirty, I think, would benefit everyone at the college. You talk about the busiest time for students and, and professors and classes. What about the people in the P M. that are in class now that cannot come to the meetings? You have to look at it on both sides. You have to look at it on both sides. As a former student from here, most classes aren't around lunchtime because they know that's that lunch period. So I'm a product of Lone Star. I've, I've, I've been online, I've been in person. And I can tell you that, that, that lunch period is not really with, with, in kids in classes. They're at lunch trying to, trying to eat to get prepared for the next class. So, but please don't discount the achievement of us becoming a two and four-year college. We are a college, just like the rest of the four-year universities. We're a college. So I would appreciate if the board would take in consideration this time change and approve it.
I'm gonna offer an amendment to item seventeen. Before I do that, I'm gonna ask counsel to brief you on what we're gonna do.
Are you requesting the process for an amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay, for an amendment to an item, you would need a motion and a second. And then there can be discussion on the amendment, and then the board will vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then you will take a vote on the item as amended. If the motion to amend fails, then you vote on the item as it was originally posted.
Is that clear with everyone?
Chair, I have a procedural parliamentary question, whatever.
Sorry, sir?
He has a push.
Can I have the floor for a moment?
He has.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
I just can't, couldn't hear you.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, is my understanding from past practice that an amendment would have to have the approval of the person making the motion? Is that not correct with Robert's Rules of Order?
Not under Robert's Rules of Order that I'm aware of.
Could I ask the chancellor if I could ask general counsel? Uh, general counsel, thank you.
Yes, so that's not my understanding, that it would have to have the approval of the original maker of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't hear you, ma'am. Could you speak up? I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Sound is not good in this, in this building. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, the original maker of the motion would not have to agree to amend the motion.
So in other words, any board member can make a motion to amend?
That's right. Does everybody understand what, what I'm about to do?
Yes, sir, I stand corrected, and thank you.
No problem. I'd like to make a motion to change the time from ten thirty to four P M. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We got a second. So we're gonna vote on, any discussion on that?
Yes, sir. A question, if I may. Counsel, could you kind of walk us through where we are now? So we're now voting on the motion to change the time to amend the original motion from ten thirty to four. So if we, explain to me the outcome of a yes vote and a no vote, please.
Okay, if, if the amendment is approved, then the board will, will consider the item as amended, which would be another vote to consider the policy change. But instead of changing five o'clock to ten thirty, it would be changing five o'clock to, to four P M.
Okay, thank you.
And if it fails, we go back and consider the change from five to ten thirty.
Does everybody understand?
I understand. I was getting ready. Can I speak to it now? Are we gonna do this amendment? Can I speak to this four o'clock thing?
Sure.
There's been a motion and a second, so you can.
Okay. I, 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 I'm not with this four o'clock. You, you, it's four o'clock, five o'clock, what's the difference? You, even in more, I mean, no, I don't agree with that. I'm, I'm not buying four o'clock. That's not passing with me.
Okay. Any other discussions, comments?
Is there ever a reason four o'clock? You, you brought up four o'clock, because I mean, I, I'm not convinced of what hour, what time. I don't, I want to do it earlier. I just, four doesn't change it much.
Well, my rationale, it's earlier than five. If the meetings are well-run, then we're out of here probably by six, seven the latest. Um, that gives us time to not drive late home. It still gives people the opportunity who work, uh, to come to these meetings, uh, if they want. That's my rationale for this. Uh, other than that ten thirty in the morning, which is, I can tell you, it's difficult.
Yeah.
For working persons, if you're not working, it's not that difficult. Or if you have shift work, it may be easier. I mean, I've got a pretty flexible sched- schedule if I want it to be. Um, but all, also, I've gotten, you know, feedback from others that that ten thirty time is just hard. So that's my opinion. I'm just giving you why. You asked a question. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, let me say this. I did poll many of the, you know, not just my committee, some of the board members. That didn't come out of just thin air, ten thirty. That was met with approval by a lot of people who felt that was more flexible for them. Even, I know Trustee Bruce Art, I'm not speaking for her, but five o'clock doesn't cut it with her, with her school. It doesn't cut it at all, but she can get away at ten thirty. And, uh, some people want it ten o'clock, but I, at least I tried to, you know, get in between. Uh, four o'clock, listen, in the wintertime, it's dark at five thirty, so I don't buy, that's not safe. I don't buy that at all, because it's going to be dark. I have had board meetings. I've been here at five o'clock, and when I left at six o'clock, it was dark. In the wintertime, and it's dark at, at seven. So, so there's no difference in four and five. And like I said, I don't know how difficult it is for the rest of the board, but the majority of the people I spoke to, ten thirty was not a difficult time. As a matter of fact, it was very much welcomed. I don't bring anything to the table that I have not already discussed with other people. Trust me. I would never have said ten thirty if the people that I talked to didn't feel like it was feasible. The committee felt it was feasible. As a matter of fact, I had a few trustees wanting it at ten. But we decided that, that ten thirty, you know, just, just, just do it at ten thirty. It was closer to lunch. So I'm not buying this four o'clock. I'm like, Trustee, I, I don't really see a difference between four and five. It's, 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 it's a, this is a non-issue. It's non-debatable for me.
All right. Any other comments? So what we're voting on is the amendment to change the time from ten thirty to four P M., okay? Trustee Pierce?
No.
Trustee Salivar? Trustee Maria? Trustee Sullivan?
No.
Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson? Trustee vote?
Yes.
No, I vote yes. So the motion fails. So now we're gonna go back and vote on the action item as stated, right? All right. Any other discussions before we go for the vote? Alrighty, um, Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Salivar? Trustee Maria?
Abstain.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Kane?
No.
Trustee Wilson? Trustee vote?
Yes.
You said yes, sir? I shall vote no. Motion passes. Alrighty. Leaves us one, one more agenda item, that's nineteen, and I think, Trustee Sullivan, that's yours, isn't it?
I asked that it be pulled, yes, sir.
Okay, let me, uh, do the formality. Uh, may I have a? Okay, let me, uh, do the formality. Uh, may I have a motion to consider item nineteen second?
Second.
Okay. It's open for discussion, sir. Go for it.
Thank you. I move to adopt the order declaring unopposed candidate Michael Mike Sullivan elected as trustee for district eight of the Lone Star College Board of Trustees, therefore canceling the November twenty twenty-four election for district eight. And that the college takes steps for Montgomery and Harris Counties to include Mike Sullivan on the ballot as an unop- unopposed candidate. That's the motion.
Are you finished, sir?
Yes, I said that's the motion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's just hard to hear here. I guess I'll get the audio worked on it, you know, before the next time. All right, so we're voting on item nineteen. Let's just do it this way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item passes. Thank God, that's over. Let's go to the financial report.
Trustees, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Um, so as you see in the packets before you, as well as the visuals, is this is a presentation at the close of month end, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So just a few context items. I know sometimes we, um, it's, it's good to point out that while we are in F Y twenty-five, physical year, we are still reporting on physical year twenty-four. And we're closed out month of July thirty-first. So I just wanted to make that distinction as we're going through the reports. Um, as you're looking at, uh, the financial statement, it is clear that we, as of the close of July thirty-first, we had received a hundred and four point seven percent of our, uh, anticipated revenue. So that's always a good sight to see when you have more revenue than you anticipated. And we've already alluded to, uh, the rationale for that in past months, uh, dealing with House Bill eight, um, increased taxes as well as increased, uh, tuition and fees, um, coming in. When we're looking at expenditures, we are still continuing to, to track below, um, our anticipated budget. So at, uh, July thirty-first, we were only at slightly less than eighty percent of our budget authority in expenditures. Uh, so we still have August month to go in that physical year as well as the physical year close out that typically lasts through September and October. So this is just another visual representation of those actual numbers, just showing you the percentage, um, to budget. So when you're looking at, um, month end for July thirty-first and looking at the state appropriations, you can start to see where the increase in revenue adjusted was received for. So the variance with state appropriation, as has been stated, uh, was due to House Bill eight and increased appropriations based on the new funding in, uh, uh, close to eight point four million. Tuition and fees were slightly above seven million. And then, of course, we've had an additional increase in investment income. Um, even though taxes were slightly below, uh, we, that's where you get to our twenty-six million in increased, uh, revenue for the year. Again, just another visual representation of showing you a different way to look at, um, our expenditures for year end. Um, when we're looking at expenditures, there's really no, um, uh, budgeted variance here worth noting. Again, we still have, um, twenty million, twenty percent of the budget left, um, before close out. And so there's no budgeted variance that is, uh, worthy of mentioning at this point. We are tracking where we should be. Um, and we wanted to point out two key things. Um, your buildings and your ground report is in your packet, uh, but we were also, were, received notification, uh, early last week that we were notified that our annual comprehensive financial report for physical year ending August thirty-first actually qualified for the G F O A certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So that is due to all the hard work behind the scenes of all of our finance teams in the campus. And so I wanted to acknowledge that hard work that they put into it, as well as the finance and audit committee who helps to oversee the act first. So, uh, would like to give them kudos for recipient of that award. And the last item that I did want to indicate is that we did receive notice from the state, um, very late into August that even though they increased our estate appropriations by sixteen million in the last report in July, we have gotten indications that while that was allocated to us in the file, that those appropriations had not actually been indicated or approv- approved in the state budget. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that to receive that additional sixteen million in funding that the state has, uh, given to us as an allocation, that there will need to be a special, um, session of the Texas legislation to actually approve that additional for, funding on behalf of the coordinating board to actually make those funds available to us. So we will continue to keep the, the board apprised of that. But as, uh, we received knowledge of that, I wanted to make sure that this board was aware of that.
And board, if I may, just there, and, and this is a key sort of consideration that I was talking about earlier. This is why we're not tying people's salaries to this money. This is why we're not tying tuition for students to this money. Because right now, had we done that, those people would be in peril because the funding isn't there. And so that lies, there lies the reason for the strategic decision to, we're not gonna spend that money and count on that money until we actually have it. And once we get it, we're not going to use it for certain things like salaries and things of that nature. Because then we're again susceptible to this last minute sort of phone call, oh, by the way, I O U, but the money's not actually there. And that's really what we're trying to prevent because right now at institutions that relied on that money, they're scrambling.
Happy to entertain. Any questions?
Yeah. Okay. So with that money, that's going to be discussing the, uh, session next year, right?
Um, so really two points. So, uh, it, uh, it's my understanding that the coordinating board, um, has a plan with the state to bring that forward. Because it's not just Lone Star. It's really the, all the states that are part of that appropriation. So it's my understanding that that would be reviewed in October, or at least that's the plan. And we would know. So in essence, an, an allocation was given. They allocated more out than they actually had in their coffer, if you will. So now they have to go back legislatively, just as we would have to come to you for board approval, or they're having to go back to the legislation to increase that amount. We have no reason to know that they wouldn't, but it just, it's at the hands of the legislation to vote that. And if voted, then we would be made whole for the allocation that we budgeted for. And so as the chancellor said, we've tried to be good stewards of pulling that back, especially the delta between years is really that, that, um, what's it, um, at stake, if you will? Not the entire amount, just the additional amount. Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Chair, could I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question. Thanks. Uh, can you tell us how we're tracking on fund reserve at this point, either percentage or by dollars?
Um, yes, sir. I don't have that exact figure, but I believe we reported last year it was somewhere hovering around thirty-six percent.
Okay, uh, going forward, chair, if you don't mind, I'm gonna make a polite request, recommendation that that be part of your monthly, uh, presentation to the board, just a mention of where we are. How we're tracking during the year.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We will work that in.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
I have a question. So, Dr. Bein, that thirty-six percent does not include the forty million, or the thirty-six million dollars the board authorized to be moved to the U R P fund, right? So it's a thirty-six percent and an extra forty million dollars.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Sir.
All right, thank you. The board of trustees, in accordance with section five five one dot zero zero one, uh, the Texas government code, the Open Meetings Act, will move into closed section under one of, or more of the following provisions of the act, section five five one oh seven one, oh seven two, oh seven four and oh seven six. And we will have no business when we come back from those sessions. So you should go to your session.
Point of privilege before they leave.
I'm sorry?
I, I, can I have a point of privilege?
Okay.
What I want to say, since, um, action item eleven passed, action item seventeen passed, changing venue, changing time. This means that this is official. So that means that our next board meeting can take place at U P at ten thirty. Am I correct?
That's part of chancellor's choice.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct because we've always interpreted board action, as soon as board changes policy, it's effective immediately. And that's for the.
I just wanted these good people in here to know that the next board meeting will be here at ten thirty.
Yes.
Come at five o'clock, I'm gone.
And, and if I may, Chair, I just want to say something, right? Um, so as someone who has made this mistake several times tonight, I just want to commend again our I T folks, the folks that work on the sound. Um, this is a different room. And so I can tell you that the acoustics are different. Um, the distance from which we have to put the mic to our faces is different. And like I've told employees throughout sort of lots and different things, when we try new things, sometimes they're not gonna work as well as we want them to. But as we teach our students, we must learn and overcome those things because that is only where we grow. And so I want to make sure that no one goes home from I T or facilities tonight thinking that I'm displeased with your performance. I'm very grateful. You guys have worked really hard and thank you so much.
Okay, at seven forty, I hereby adjourn the closed session.